You're live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brookline School Committee at February 23rd, 2021. We have a full agenda, as we usually do. We have many people signed up for public comment, public hearing on our proposal to bring more students back, or to bring students back for more hours into our schools. So we will do that shortly, not for a while yet. It'll be probably another hour before we get to that. So first thing is the consent agenda. And I move to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second to that motion? Thank you, David. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll go right ahead. David?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Is Andy here? Oh, hi, Andy. Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. Claire, you're up next.
Awesome. Okay. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Claire Galian, and I'm the student representative on school committee. Let's get right into the report. I decided to pull students on a pretty hot topic for this week: snow days. Last, or a couple of weeks ago, we had a full remote snow day in place of a cancellation or early release. I, like many of my fellow students, felt frustrated and sad all day. So I decided to send out this survey. It got 1,046 responses, and it was comprised of two questions. First, how do you think EHS should handle snow days? And second, what issues regarding snow days are you concerned about? For the first question, 72.8% of students said that school should be canceled on snow days. 17.3% answered an early release, "remote day" was the best course of action, and 6.6% of students chose a full remote day. 3.3% chose the other option. Most who chose the other option wrote in ideas like a combination of all three depending on the severity of the weather. I want to reiterate, 72.8% of students chose to cancel school on snow days, 761 students. I can understand why this is a difficult path to go down, and I can completely sympathize with parents and caretakers. However, to simply go down the path of a full remote day does not satisfy the needs of high schoolers or their teachers. This leads me into my next question. What issues regarding snow days are you concerned about? It was a multiple selection question with options being Wi-Fi issues, taking care of siblings, shoveling, and a write-in option. 706 students chose Wi-Fi, with dozens more writing in that they were concerned about electricity and internet. 671 students are concerned about shoveling. Many wrote in that they live with elderly family members, and when there's a full remote day, they're unable to get what they need done. One student wrote, "shoveling! It took me four hours to shovel the sidewalk and driveway, and thank God it was an early release. The fully remote days would just make it so I would have to shovel until seven, do chores and eat, and then have no time for homework." And let's not forget my last survey that revealed that over half of students have three or more hours of homework every night. 358 students selected "taking care of siblings," with even more writing about elderly family members as well. Now, let's move on to the written-in responses to the question about issues. The most common written-in answers were mental health, concerns about teachers, and the simple joys of snow days. In terms of mental health, this year has already been a struggle for most of us: slugging through school, going on Zoom day in and day out, not getting to see your friends or get close with teachers. I know COVID has been hard for all of us, but teens have been suffering. According to the CDC, beginning in April 2020, the proportion of children's mental health-related ED visits among all pediatric ED visits increased and remained elevated through October. Compared with 2019, the proportion of mental health-related visits for children aged 5 to 11 and 12 to 17 years increased approximately 24% and 31%, respectively. Adding actual snow days won't magically make these issues disappear, but taking away one of the few rest bits we get these days definitely is not helping. To quote a student, "I'm so unmotivated on days where school would have been canceled." Snow days in the past have provided a day to refresh, catch up, and distress, and not having them has taken a toll on my mental health. Let's move on to teachers. Many students wrote in about being worried on behalf of their teachers, and I know I definitely fit into that camp. For some of my teachers, their children go to school in different districts and have their school days canceled. For one of my classes, this was a real detriment on my teacher's ability to get what he needed done because he had to take care of his kids. That's not fair to him, and it's not fair to his students. In another class, my teacher was concerned about making sure she could have time to shovel that day. In my eyes, decisions made by the school committee should be in the interest of students, teachers, and administrators. Unfortunately, I don't think teachers or students were really considered in the decision to do full remote days on snow days. The last common thread I saw in the written-in answers was missing out on the excitement of having a school, having a school day canceled. Having a spontaneous day off in the middle of the school year is a rite of passage for students in New England. I believe that this quote from a student sums it up well. I think that snow days have always been something kids of all ages can look forward to. Not only do they give kids and teachers a healthy break from school and time to rest, they also allow kids to spend time outside and with family. I know very few kids that don't go out to play on a snow day. It's very sad that they won't have the opportunity to do that anymore. Also, snow days that are now remote, my teachers are being interrupted by their kids who don't have school, and not much learning is able to happen anyways. The reason I decided to conduct this survey in the first place was because I noticed how miserable everyone was on that full remote day we had a few weeks ago. Kids couldn't focus in class, and teachers were stressed. I'm fully aware that the decision of what to do on snow days is tricky. However, from now on, we should reconsider what the impact of getting rid of snow days altogether holds. You've heard directly from the students at EHS that that decision wasn't one that could work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. I will just add a little note. This just means that if you don't have a snow day, you get out one day earlier in June. So just...
Yeah, I know that. Actually, a lot of kids said that they would prefer a day in June than now.
Fair enough, fair enough. Thank you for your report. And thank you for all that work you do, not only collecting all the data and then sifting through it. So thank you for that.
Of course.
Hopefully, we won't have any more snow days. I don't know. We'll see. Jim?
Yeah, I want to thank you, Claire. Not surprised by your results. In fact, excuse me, I'm not surprised by your results at all. And in fact, having the remote option, which is new this year, is one that didn't work very well the first time, as you saw. And I think just for everybody out there, the motivation is, in fact, to keep the continuity of the instruction going with the ability to do a date certain closing at the end of the year, particularly in this year when it is so, so, so stressful and exhausting that when the end of the year comes, it'd be nice to have the end of the year. However, with that said, I will tell you that on occasion, I have gone into classes when I've had to call a snow day, but when it's snowing, and I have called school to be in session while it was snowing, and I would go to a class. Clearly, I haven't been to yours, and probably I won't, but I would go to a class, and I would ask the class to vote, was it a good call or was it a bad call? I lost every one of them of those votes. So I will tell you, I think that you're, I'm not at all surprised to hear it. It's great that the students weigh in, and just to let you know, it is, it is one of the most difficult calls that you have to make. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and let's hope it doesn't snow for the rest of the year.
Thank you. Jim, you are up next for your interim superintendent's report.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So this evening, this is going to be a hearing on the proposal to return more students to in-person education. And truly, you know, a snow day, that has some seriousness to it, clearly, but the way schools have been going this year across the country and clearly in Massachusetts has been really, not just unusual, but a memory-maker, hopefully once-in-a-lifetime kind of an event, really disruptive to families, to students, to educators, to the economy, I mean, just across the board. So nobody, I mean, underline score, bold highlight, is happy, really, with what is happening. But we are at a place now where we have seen the impact on students. We have seen the results of some of the mitigation strategies that have been happening in schools, particularly here in Brookline. When you, when, very happy with the mitigation strategies that have been implemented, whether it's cleaning strategies, the masking, having protective equipment enhanced, some of that with the shields, face shields, cohorting students, keeping the distancing, washing hands, and a significant, and I mean significant, investment by the town in ventilation. The ventilation, as I've said last time, which was just a couple of days ago, is extraordinary and continues to be, and the asymptomatic testing. So lots and lots has been done. And since we've begun school, we've been tracking and monitoring positive cases of COVID, conducting contact tracing, and finding that there is, with the exception of possibly three cases, there's no definitive evidence that we have of in-school spread. So schools are really safe places. We hear that on the national scene. We hear it locally as well. And given all of that, and lay it on top of it, are the social-emotional impacts on students. And I actually think it's, as we've said, as I've said before, on students and on families. And we are at a place where we can begin to move more students back, and all the evidence that we have seems to indicate that it will be safe to do so with the risk mitigations in place. And, and so the proposal asks to have the grades 2 to 5 returned on March 29th, and have grades 6 through 8, and then 9 through 12, on or after March 29th. And I don't have a date certain there because there are obstacles that we need to clear, and we need to get to work on clearing those obstacles. But because they are a little complicated, I didn't want to put a date certain in. But I wanted to include 6 through 12 so they can be involved in the discussions with the BEU, because we have, and I'm very appreciative of this, we have a process to work with the union together to negotiate the impacts of the decision to return students. And that process involves three weeks of negotiating. Those dates have been set, and we will be negotiating, and with the stated objective of returning the 2 to 5 on March 29th, and, and the other schools, the other students, as we clear away those obstacles. While this is not part of the proposal, I want to mention on, just as an aside, because it fits in here, that at the high school, the high school principal, headmaster, has already put out a survey to grades 10 through 12, and tomorrow, I think he's putting one out to ninth graders. There is space at the high school, particularly in grades 10 through 12, that the Mr. Meyer is asking students to give their, and families, he's surveying them to see how many he can return back. He'll be able to return them, maintaining the distance that we have in place, because he will be able to do that without delay. He's more concerned about ninth grade, because the ninth grade rooms are not, are not very live, so he's concerned about that. But he's also putting out the invitation there. Those are not going to be part of the proposal, because at this point, he is moving immediately on that because he's keeping the distance. If he's keeping the distance, it does not need to be part of the proposal. I don't want to confuse that, but I want to make sure that that's, that's understood, that we are able to move forward with the high school in a deliberate way, so long as we keep that spacing, and that is not part of the proposal. What is part of the proposal, without a date certain, is to bring in more of the high school and the middle school kids, which will require a reduction in the six-foot distance. I hope that's clear, as I want to separate those two things out, so it's not confusing as to why we're moving on to high school. So our next steps in this process, and you can read this proposal, it's been posted since last, since last week, since Thursday, thank you, Robin, and we're going to begin that process, as I say, next, next week, with the, those dates have been set for negotiations. But this evening, this is a public hearing, and we are here to listen to the, to the public, and to get their input, to learn, and to take that information back to our planning teams and our negotiating sessions, so that we can move forward with input from the community as we work deliberately towards returning more students to school. And I will say, as an interesting note, you may have seen that this morning, Jeff Riley, the Commissioner of Education, put out a statement that he's calling for all students in K-5 to return to full-time instruction by April. He's asked the Board of Education to give him the authority to act on that, and next week, we'll hear more about that, I'm sure. And he has his call, his call-out to all the superintendents tomorrow. I'll be interested to hear what he has to say. But that aside, we are, this proposal is, is, is going forward, and hearing from the community is a very important part of a decision of this nature. So with the school committee's approval here, I'm, I'm going to take notes and listen to what people have to say, and take that information back to our planning team and to our negotiating team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merini. We might also want to recognize our guests tonight as panelists. We have a number of people from Panel Four who have put in hours and hours of volunteer work to help us figure out mitigating strategies that we've been using, and just what this all means to have a healthy classroom for our students and our staff. So thank you to those who are here. Did you want to say something, Jim?
I just wanted to say, maybe David Grashock could let us know who was joining us, and special thanks to David, and special thanks to Panel Four. Thank you, Suzanne, for saying that, because Panel Four really has been instrumental in not only providing guidance to the school department and, and to me personally, which I'm enormously grateful, but also has offered and has, has met with teachers who were interested to gain, gain information, have worked with our operations department in terms of providing the kinds of mitigation that I referenced before, and to make certain that when we're looking at, what does the science say, to, to provide us with information about the latest studies that are going on, both locally and internationally, and the results of all of that. They are objective in their comments. They, they're conservative in their views in terms of keeping people safe, grounded in the reality of what's happening in, in the world, and encouraging and supportive, and, and willing to explain to the broader community the context of what we're dealing with. It has been, I think, Panel Four has been a gift to the school system, and, and I think to the community in general. I think we all owe a debt of gratitude for, for the kind of time that people are giving, who already don't have enough time to get a night's sleep, and are willing to come and share their expertise and guidance in a way that, again, I can't say it enough, is supportive and encouraging and focused and, and remains balanced, has been terrific. So David and your team, you may want to introduce your team to who are here. Again, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Merini and Madam Chair. Just, we're happy to help however we can and here, just to be a resource and answer questions that anyone has. And so I'm proud to be joined here tonight by four, by three others of our total of 11 members right now. Professor Serena Rajabian, Dr. Lakshman Swamy, and Dr. Ben Linus are all here for as much of the meeting as, as folks can stay for. And if we can help by trying to clarify any questions or answer any questions about what we've seen in our review of the evidence base and the guidance and otherwise, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you to all your panel members. And I also would like to just give a big thank you to Panels One, Two, and Three as well. They also have done a tremendous amount of work, and we have been listening and hearing and benefiting from all their expertise, and it's been ever so helpful. And we will continue to do so as, as we think about the end of the year and going into planning for next year. So thank you for that.
Thank you for that safety net, Suzanne. I should have recognized One, Two, and Three as well. So I want to express my appreciation to them as well. So thank you.
So we're now going to move into our public hearing. We have many people who have thoughts that they want to share with us. And so we are going to limit our speakers to two minutes. Remember that we take notes, that, that Robin puts your ideas in the minutes, so they're there for the record. We do listen. We do not comment after each speaker. So just know that. It's the way we usually do it, but I just want to remind people again, if someone says the exact same thing that you wanted to say, it's okay to say, I did all that, and, and move on. But each person will get two minutes, and David is going to, David Perman is going to help us with the timing of that. So the first person is Julie Jet, and then Rachel Agren Silva.
Thank you, Suzanne. My name is Julie Jettie. I'm a town meeting member and the parents, the parent of students in the third and sixth grades. From the beginning of planning for the current school year, the Public Schools of Brookline has had a commitment to safety funded by the taxpayers. The district was able to invest in greatly enhanced ventilation and cleaning, and later in asymptomatic testing. The remarkable volunteer experts on Panel Four, and I'd like to personally thank them tonight, they've just done such an amazing job, have tirelessly sought out and analyzed the latest science on how to operate our schools safely. And there's terrific news. The asymptomatic testing in our schools has shown that we can operate safely for children and adults, and we are operating safely. Further research has shown, and the CDC has allowed, that masking and enhanced ventilation makes it safe for children and adults to be in schools together with less than six feet of distancing. It's our job now to leverage the investments and tools and bring all grades back safely, including the upper grades. The school committee and Dr. Merini negotiated a memorandum of agreement that enables all students to be brought back safely, and it is time to schedule the return of grades 6 through 12, along with the other grades. Other speakers tonight will talk about how much our older students are suffering on a clinical level. I'll just leave you with this. When I told my sixth grader that his brother would be returning to in-person school, but that he wouldn't, at least not yet, he said, wow, so I guess they don't care about us. I'll be very glad to share with him what Dr. Merini said tonight, that we aren't giving up on grades 6 through 12, and I urge all the parties to move as quickly as humanly possible to make their return to school in person full-time happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Rachel, you're up, and then Nancy Rowe.
Hi, thank you. I am Dr. Rachel Agren Silva, and as a pediatrician, I have a duty to advocate for children. And I have previously spoken about the mental health crisis that is affecting children due to this prolonged isolation they have been facing, and that the effects of the pandemic on children have been cumulative. Children who had been doing well are now struggling. A year into the pandemic now, we have a chance to act, a chance to lessen students' isolation, a chance to prevent more children from decompensating. Schools are one part of the solution to counter the social-emotional ravages of the pandemic. As a pediatrician, I also live by the code of do no harm. The district's proposed plan is not at the expense of children's or teachers' safety. Brookline has extraordinary safety standards for mitigating COVID. I trust our experts guiding the district. All grades should be phased in, starting in March, including those children in the critical middle school years. Logistical concerns are important to work through, and solutions can be thoughtfully found. Please, let's look back together on this moment of history and know that we chose to rescue our children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Nancy, you're up, and then Devin Powell.
Perhaps you could go to Devin Powell and then come back.
Devin, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Devin Powell. I'm the parent of a third grader and an eighth grader at Runcle School. I want to start off by thanking everyone for beginning this process to bring second through fifth grade back as soon as possible. And a huge thank you to all of the principals, the teachers, and the staff, who are putting in huge efforts to make this work. I wholeheartedly support bringing these students back full-time. I trust the science. I trust Panel Four's recommendations, and I believe that it is safe to bring students back full-time with decreased distancing. I say this as someone who is immunocompromised herself and at high risk. I do not look at decisions like this lightly. I would also like to talk briefly about how upset I was and how middle school was handled. In the school committee meeting last week, we were told that second through fifth is coming back with a set plan and date, but that middle school and high school were too complicated to have a current plan. Yet, we then had two representatives from the high school there in the meeting to problem-solve and discuss potential plans for the high school. Middle school had no representation in this meeting, and no problem-solving was discussed. If both are complicated, then why did we only discuss the high school and ignore middle school? It left middle school parents and students feeling dismissed and ignored, even though this is such an important age to bring back. This is middle school, a time of tremendous psychological impact, where peer groups and the beginning of separating from your parents and forming your own identity is of critical importance. I have heard it said in numerous times in school committee meetings and panel discussions how important these transition years are to bring back, and yet there is no date and no plan. I find it disingenuous to say that you are bringing students back full-time in large part due to the mental health concerns, but then to leave middle school completely out of the plan. In my experience with my middle schooler and his peers, I have seen depression, apathy, grades slipping, new engagement in risky behavior, and so many other concerning psychological impacts due to isolation and lack of school. To say that it's too complicated is not okay. These students deserve the effort of problem-solving for them. Panel Four says that all grades can go back safely. Let's be creative. Give us a date and a plan for middle school and bring these kids some hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Nancy Rowe, are you there? Otherwise, we'll come back. Okay, Kevin McKenzie? And after Kevin, we have Hajar Gelshad.
Hi, my name is Kevin McKenzie, and I am a paraprofessional at the Lawrence School in the middle school, funnily enough. In the hundreds of conversations that have occurred about my students and their learning since August, most often, more often than not, they have not been included. I ask that the district includes all stakeholders in the return to full-time in-person instruction. While the listening session with students was a good start, a more accessible venue directly with students must be made available to them. The district should collect data through a survey, asking students how they feel about returning to their schools full-time and in person. Like the universal screener administered to all students in grades three to eight, a survey should be administered to students who are stakeholders. who are stakeholders of this process, asking them how they feel about returning to in-person instruction five days a week. There is no alternative to in-person once students are returned. We need to know how to best support our students. At present, I have students who are afraid or anxious about coming into the building just two days a week. This fear and anxiety is not going to go away and may intensify once we return to full in-person learning. A survey like the universal screener will not only help us accomplish this, but give voice to those who are not often included in these conversations, conversations that are about them. And since all stakeholders must be included, I ask that you engage in good faith with the Brookline Educators Union. Answer our questions about how a return to full in-person instruction will work. If you did not have the answers, tell us that transparency and honesty is essential to building trust. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Hajar, you're next, and then Robin LaWinter.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for holding this public hearing. We are delighted at the positive change that the school committee and Dr. Merini have presented. I want to echo others' thoughts, and I won't dwell on them, on the imperative need to bring back middle schoolers and ninth graders. This is the most tenuous age for children. As a, as a health professional, I've seen this in my, in my patients when I worked in pediatrics. It's really important and vital to bring them back. I just want to leave you with a few words because I have spoken at every meeting in the last few weeks and months advocating for my children, other children in Brookline. The children only have you to advocate and act on their behalf. Other, other entities in Brookline have other interests and have other priorities, and that is their right and their duty to the people that they serve. Brookline's children only have the school committee and Dr. Merini to act on your behalf, on their behalf, excuse me. Please don't wait until a child has done the unthinkable, which many children in Brookline are on the verge of doing, before you act. It is imperative to bring back all children, all grades, even earlier than the timeline you've stated. I truly fear that March 29th is too late. Please don't forget, the children in Brookline only have you to act directly on their behalf. There is no one else. Please take that responsibility very seriously. Thank you. And I thank you so much for all the hard work that's going into all of this. And I think all the teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Hajar. Robin, you're next, and then Paige Scott Reed.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Robin. Go right ahead.
Hi, I am a parent of a sixth and an eighth grader. And first off, I want to thank everybody for letting us speak and for listening for us and for all the hard work that you've all put in to this whole year, which has been insane. As many people have said, the science now tells us it's safe to bring all the kids back. And I do support bringing all the kids back to school every day. But I want to speak particularly to the kids in six through nine. I listened to the, the meeting on Tuesday and I was pleased to hear about the plan to bring the grade, to bring up to grade five back full time. And as someone spoke to earlier, there was considerable thought and discussion for how to do this with the high school kids. But it was sorely missing any sort of plan for the middle schools. We have heard loud and clear that the kids are suffering and adolescents have a clear increase in mental health issues. Both of my kids have had their own bouts of sadness brought on by isolation and not being able to explore who they would like to be or trying on different personas and different friends, as is normal in this age group. Now, my kids hear that there's a discussion on how to bring back the younger kids and the older kids, but there's been no discussion or thought to the middle school kids. What we've heard was it was too complicated, so things will remain as they are, at least for now. So sure, it's complicated, but hybrid is complicated, life in COVID is complicated, and quite frankly, life without COVID is complicated. Time is running out for this year. We're almost to March. And I say enough, enough talk, just figure it out. I urge you to just pick a day, any day, just give us a day and say the kids will be back on that day. And then work with the principals and the teachers to make a real plan to meet this deadline. It can be done. Think outside the box. They can be at school half day every day or do specials at home. They can opt in or opt out of classes like conservatory. By the time this is all in place, the weather should be warm enough for us to have classes, some classes outside, or you can have teachers zoom in. There are many options. Just make it work. It's plain not fair to overloop, look, a group of kids simply because it's complicated. And on a separate note, one thing that would certainly help the mental health in my family is to not have to deal with this unknown. Just give us a date. And if these kids are not going back full time this year, pull the Band-Aid and tell us that. Dangling this possibility over our heads and then retracting it multiple times is is compounding all of these issues. So at this point, I am asking you to give us a date and figure it out. And please don't overlook the middle school kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Paige is next, and then we'll go to Nancy Rowe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Paige. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Paige Scott Reed. I've spoken many times. I'm the parent of an eighth grader and a senior in the high school as well as a graduate. This town and this school committee know how to solve tough problems. We've proven that. We, as a town, have the resources to tackle tough problems in a way and at a level that is rare in public school systems. To whom much has been given, much is expected in return. That should be our motto today. It is well past time for the town and the school committee to focus on bringing students back to in-person education. The loss of in-person school has been devastating. The president has spoken and said, kids belong back in school now. The governor has spoken and said, kids belong back in school now. This school district is among the most privileged and is certainly capable of bringing kids back to in-person learning full time now, from grade kindergarten through grade 12 now. At the end of three weeks, the school committee should have new authority under the memorandum of ingredient agreement. I'm asking that you come away from those negotiations with three very specific things. Three feet of minimum distance as the standard in grades K through 12. All grades back to full, all hybrid students from all grades back to full-time in-person school. And 850 hours and for the elementary school and 935 hours at the school, at the high school level of structured learning time for each and every student by the end of this school year. Those are things that you can deliver. You have a legal obligation to deliver, and I hope that you will have the will and the commitment to deliver. Just a couple additional thoughts.
You're, you're already over, sorry.
Just, just one thing then. The BEU has asked whether parents are comfortable with bringing grades back to three feet of distance. I, I'm trying to deliver that message as clearly as I can. For my family, there's a petition that's been signed by more than 300 individuals. And I think you're going to hear from many, many more families tonight. I think you can feel confident that there are many, many families who are comfortable and ready for their children to be back at a minimum of three feet of distance. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Nancy, you're up, and then Shanna Penna.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Nancy. Go ahead.
Thank you for your patience with me. So I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I want to say, the Brookline School Committee and the superintendent, their job is to work in the best interests of the 7,000-plus kids in our schools. It is their duty to put the best interests of those kids first. For far too long, our district has put the health and well-being of the adults in the school buildings above the kids. The teachers have the union to protect their interests. The families and children in this district only have you. We only have the school committee and the superintendent. Do not fail them. You have the support of many, many parents and kids, the support of science, the support of Desi, the support of the governor, and you have the mechanism in the MOA that ultimately gives you control to get kids back in school. It's what you negotiated three months ago. Brookline has multiple layers of mitigation in place, and it's been working all year. The scientific evidence tells us that six feet of distancing is not essential to our mitigation plan. We've been called on to follow the science, and the science supports the fact that COVID infections are more likely to be spread outside of schools. I don't know what else to say to convince you that kids need school. And I'm not as concerned about their incredible academic losses as I am for the mental health pandemic that we now face. My children are anxious and depressed and disconnected. Their friends are the same. My daughter is afraid every day that one of her friends will kill themselves. Let me say that again. She is afraid of losing a friend to suicide. This is not hyperbole. This is the reality of the children who have lost so much and fear losing so much more. Getting back into buildings is only the first step in repairing the damage done to our kids. The broken relationship between the school and the children that have been put on the back burner will require skill to mend. They need more than mental health. They need more mental health attention when they get back. I'm happy for grades K through five. I have a fifth grader, but I also have two high school students. And the long-awaited plan to get those kids back in the buildings has been far too long already. I've routinely been disappointed to hear the mantra, we can't because X, we can't because Y, over and over. Roadblock after roadblock have been thrown up to keep kids out of buildings. Last week, it was because conservatory, because furniture. We're smarter than this. No more delays, no more excuses, no more ignoring the science. These are extraordinary times and require extraordinary people to do extraordinary things. And I think we are those people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. Shanna, you're up, and then Carolyn Fall.
Hi, my name is Shana Penna, mother of a 10th grade student at VHS. My child and her friend experienced both COVID and the multi-system inflammatory syndrome last spring. The same syndrome that just last week, the Vanderbilt University scientists stated was increasing in both severity and prevalence in children up to age 14. My daughter and her friend got it while at OLS. There is no doubt to either of our families that it was in-school transition, transmission, because they did not hang out outside of school. Does this mean that I'm advocating for schools to close? No. My daughter and her friend happily go to school. But let's be clear that increasing students while decreasing space is technically two variables that we are changing, not one. Like any decision that involves risk, these should be scaffolded. Just like, just recently, scientists stated that masking protocols in the US are no longer sufficient. When scaffolding these into full time, we need to take into account these new masking protocols. We need to take into account the variations. And we need to take into account that our vulnerable populations are hesitant because they are significantly more at risk. We need to understand that families weigh the risk with full-time in-person individually, based on our own family's level of risks. See, my daughter wants to go to school. She too wants to see her friends. And as a student on an IEP, she benefits from in-person supports. However, she also has asthma. And masking all day, every day is going to be problematic. She needs the important, in-person supports, and anyone telling us to go fully remote dismisses my family's needs. Going against the CDC puts families like mine more at risk. My call to action, as we're talking about opening up full time, is we need solutions for the most risky times of day. We need solutions for lunch. We need solutions for the synchronous classes at the high school that's packing kids into the gym. And I hope prior to making these decisions, we, we actually come up with solutions. I'm going to end with this. I do not know any parent or teacher that wants school to be closed. We all want our children in school, but some of us have to weigh the risks of full-time in-person differently. And for us, it's scary. So when people start advocating for reduced spacing, we have to think about what our risks are, how our risks are increasing. And we just want to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Shana. Carolyn, you're up, and then Acacia Landfield.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, Carolyn. Go right ahead.
Okay. School committee and Dr. Merini, we are here tonight because this process is laid out in the MOA that you worked on for several months in the fall and signed in December. In that MOA and earlier in the year, you negotiated away dozens of hours of student learning time in the form of shortened days, which our kids acutely feel every week, and which is cutting their school year by a week on top of the 10 days they lost in September. Because of that, PFB is out of compliance with learning mandates set by the Department of Education. The promise made to town meeting when we approved $120 million school budget last year, that approval had implicit in it accountability, the idea that PFB would do what it's supposed to do and would work in the best interest of students down the line. If budget accountability and state regulations are not enough to get PFB to do right by its stakeholders, we have you, our elected school committee, and by way of you, our superintendent. You are the officials charged with working in the best interest of our children. That's the trust we have put in you, and we know you work very hard. So when you negotiated away all that learning time in the MOA, you also gained something. You gained the right to decide absolutely what the distancing standard is in our schools in this COVID era, as you should have. And we thank you for that. That was tremendously important because you knew that that would best serve the public schools of Brookline and our children. The MOA says you are negotiating about the distancing, not the impacts of distancing. So now, all you have to do is utilize that authority, which you negotiated for, apparently with great vigor, and celebrated, and made some sacrifices for. You have a responsibility to utilize every mechanism at your disposal to help our children. And reducing the distance standard is the key. You have backup from evidence, you have backup from testimony. You now have backup from the governor and the education commissioner. All you have to do is use the authority at your disposal in the service of all our kids and our entire school system. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Acacia, you're next, and then Rebecca Locke.
Hi, good evening. My name is Acacia Landfield. I just wanted to echo that we are so lucky to have public school parents who are experts in the field and able to guide us through this process of reopening safely. We've never had any other choice but to listen to them, and we needed to listen to them, panel four and all of the other experts many months ago, and we still must listen to them today. It's, it is so dire. There has been so much heartbreaking divisiveness in our community, not only here, but in other similar towns and cities. But this has not been and cannot be a war of parents against teachers. The rhetoric on social media and the media and even among school leaders here in our town, it has to end. It's, it's hurting too many. It's hurting everyone. If all of the experts did not support a reopening, we would, we would not want to be in, in schools ourselves, not for our kids, not for the teachers, not for anyone. But the scientific consensus is there. I wanted to echo what Hajar said, as well as I think Nancy, there are other interests and other priorities in town. That's been very clear from many, many months ago, from earlier than last summer. But the kids only have the school committee and the superintendent. And March 29th may be too late for some, aside from the very real risk to life and health of our kids. I really hope that either as part of these return conversations, or, you know, a debriefing later, that the school committee and the superintendent has a serious conversation, not only now, but for the future, about how to answer what Andy eloquently stated over six months ago, that this is essentially a staffing issue that's been pushed out into the community. There was a, there was a full recognition of that last summer, at least among some members of There was a, there was a full recognition of that last summer, at least among some members of the school committee. And yet, zero was done to address this. And it's been a huge pain point for, not only for kids, but for families. I was going to talk about some real-world scenarios. I don't know how much time I have, but I'll mention a few. From neighboring towns, there are over 30 calls to DCF each week by schools reporting on parents whose kids are not signing into remote learning. Imagine what those families are going through. Parents and teenagers in our town being admonished for advocating for voiceless kids, even as the kids themselves are being admonished. And just asking for transparency and reporting on how much kids are suffering. They don't deserve to be admonished like this. Even at, what's that?
Please conclude, you're already over.
I would just like to say that there's been an incredible amount of divisiveness against parents that really needs to end, even among some school leaders. And in recent email newsletter, parents being called unkind and shameful. And this school leader also referring to in-school time as babysitting. So our community has been torn apart. And in reality, we should have always been united from day one. So if we can please, please get grades back, one, one to five back. One is already going back, but do not delay. Get them back sooner than March 29th. Get the middle schoolers back sooner. It's great that there's kind of a plan coming together, but it's, it's, it's so, it's coming so late and it's such a huge cost. And when we can, let's have a conversation on how to heal a very, very broken community. Thank you.
Thank you Acacia. Rebecca, you're up, and then Greg Walsh.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can Rebecca, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Locke. I'm the mom of two kids who attend Lincoln. And I'm a pediatrician for local underserved children. Literally every day, I talk to patients who are struggling with the terrible consequences of not being in school full-time. I have had several patients get admitted to the hospital for suicidal ideation and for suicide attempts. Kids are struggling with anxiety, depression, worsening ADHD, eating disorders, obesity, sleep disturbances, too much screen time, and worsening allergies and asthma due to unsafe living conditions and being stuck at home all day. School is a safe haven for kids who struggle with food insecurity and emotional and physical abuse. This is absolutely an equity issue. We are morally obligated to help children and children need to go to school. I trust expert Panel Four's guidance on how to return safely to full-time school. This should not even be a question. We need to do what's right for our children and that means all of our children, especially middle school and high school students. Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca. Greg, you're up, and then Leah Cox.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can Greg, go right ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I speak as the parent of a kindergartner and a third grader at the Baker School. And I'd like to say that now is the time for us to bring our children and all of our children from first through 12th grade back for full-time in-person learning. The MOA gives the school committee the ability to adjust the spacing requirements. And I think now is the time to act. Science definitely supports this. The positivity rate for the state of Massachusetts is currently at 1.9%. And that is the lowest it has been since October. And today, Governor Baker came out strongly in favor of returning all students to school, reminding us that there is little evidence of in-school transmission. And he said, quote, "The evidence is crystal clear and has been for months that this is the case." Secretary of State has said that schools are a safe place for children and adults. Infection rates among children who are in school are actually lower than among those students who are learning from home. Governor Baker reminded us that with masks, improved ventilation, and pool testing, our schools are safe. Schools across the country and at Europe back at school with three-foot distance and there is no widespreads, no widespread spreading of the disease. So please follow the science and bring our children back to school full-time. Thank you very much.
Thank you Greg. Leah, you're up, then Catherine De Silva.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Great, I'm the mom of a first grader and a third grader. And like others, I do want to say thank you for working to bring these grades back. On a side note, as was previously mentioned, I do hope that once these kids are back in school, the half-day hybrid planning days that fill up a total of two days per month will go away, as it certainly will not be needed anymore once kids are back full-time. So I trust the safety mechanisms that are in place and wouldn't be sending my own kids back if it wasn't safe. So while it's a great start that you're bringing back elementary kids, it is not enough. We need to bring all students back now, no excuses. The MOA gives the public schools of Brookline the full decision-making authority on distancing, as it should. Reduce the distancing so that all students in grades one to 12 can come back. And now, you cannot keep mentioning the importance of mental health, but then leaving 11 to 16-year-olds with absolutely no school and nothing. Thank you.
Thank you Leah. Catherine, you're up, and then Tal Kennett.
Hi, this is Danielle De Silva, Catherine De Silva's mom. As a single parent who's been on all these school committee meetings since the summer. My kids are always here and they're listening. And Catherine asked me a few weeks ago, how come nobody ever asks the kids what they think? So she wrote something, so she's going to read it now. You got this, you gotta do it now though.
Hi, I'm Catherine De Silva. I'm in the third grade at Baker School. I used to like school, but after everything went hybrid, school started to become boring. There's not enough to do on home days. When I finish stuff early, I have nothing to do, so I usually play games on the computer, such as Prodigy, which makes me a brainwashed screen zombie. Being on a screen all the time makes all the stuff you learned in the past years kind of fade away. When I'm on, when I'm on a screen too much, I have trouble sleeping, which really affects my ability to pay attention in school. Being hybrid is so hard. It makes me sad to say bye to my friends on Tuesday and not, and not, and knowing that I'm not going to see them until Monday. I happen to have a little sister in kindergarten. It's hard to drop her off every day and have her be so happy to be there in school full-time, while I'm just sitting in my room staring at the screen all day. I've been waiting for months to go back full-time, but now I'm starting to not think it's going to happen. Groomups have said it's going to happen soon. Well, maybe adults should be more specific on soon, soon. I'm sick of hearing soon, soon, soon. Soon could be tomorrow, it isn't though. Soon could also be months from now. I want, I want to know when, when and, I want to know when and I want to believe it. I want to know all the kids in Brookline do, so why can't you tell us? Us kids have the right to know. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Catherine. Tal, you're up, and then Lance Zhang.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So our family is beyond thrilled with the latest plans to bring grades one to five back full-time. And I really want to thank all those who are making this happen. First, I am so deeply grateful for Brookline's science-first approach. Our Panel Four members, who are volunteering countless hours and are on top of the latest and greatest and not-so-greatest science, are not only world-class experts, they are also putting their quote-unquote kids where their mouth is. They are sending their own kids to our schools. So they have the highest possible incentive to recommend a wise, well-thought-out approach. I am a scientist and I trust the recommendations 100%. Thank you Panel Four. I'd like to also acknowledge the now uncountable number of hours spent by the school committee members, who are volunteering their time and have worked tirelessly to maximize students' time in school within the many constraints that came up, and continue to do so. Thank you. And I'd like to also recognize those for whom making this happen is part of their job and their job description exploded this year. They too are working so very hard. Thank you all. It is just about a year since first to fifth graders attended school full-time. They need it. Their teachers, who are now working 17 times harder to make an unprecedented and very difficult hybrid model happen, will hopefully find that doing away with this hybrid model will make their lives maybe a tiny bit easier. They need it. They earned it. And while I'm personally ready for full-time school to start six months ago, I love that the teachers and the staff are now getting almost six weeks to prepare this time around, to get it right, to get the questions answered, and make sure all the details and all of the devils within those details are worked out as optimally as possible. Lastly, I don't have a middle schooler or a ninth grader, but I would like to echo Mariah's words from before. They are students too. I understand the signs for older kids is different, but they are still kids. I was thrilled to hear from Dr. Marini earlier this evening that these plans are now in process as well. And I trust Panel Four will have a leading role in these plans too. And that these kids too will soon have a date, as Robin LeWinter put so well earlier. And to sum up, an enthusiastic thank you and yes vote on the one-to-five plan from our family.
Thank you Tal. Lance is up, and then Garth Bruin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm a parent of a kindergartner. I think everyone in this community knows very well the science and facts with respect to the safety of school opening. The school committee knows, the district leadership knows, every parent knows, and I am very sure every teacher knows. Otherwise, our kids are in trouble. So instead of discussing what the facts are, I'm asking everyone just to stand back and think of what is right. Would it be right if first responders formed a union and refused to go in-person to rescue people in need, but instead provide assistance over Zoom? 911, what's your emergency? My house is on fire. Okay, let me send you a Zoom link. Would it be okay if the health provider formed a union and refused to go to hospital or clinics to see patients or even perform lifesaving procedures because of risk of catching COVID? So I'm asking the school community members to stand up for what is right, even if it means to stand up against what is powerful. Thank you.
Thank you. Garth, you're up, and then Esther Liebel.
Hi. I'm a Lincoln School parent of a fifth and seventh grader. So like many have said, my children are suffering terribly by not being in school. They're so much happier on the two days they are in school in person. Beyond education, I feel like all the kids are having their very youth stolen from them. I say that for all the kids I see in the neighborhood and all the kids I know in my life. I'm a recent cancer survivor. And the teachers are going to get the vaccine before me, which I'm perfectly okay with if it means my kids can go back to school. We're all taking risks every day. I have to go out in the world and meet with people in person. Okay? But we're using common sense and we're taking precautions. There are limits to what we can control. It seems that pretty much everything that can be reasonably done has been done. The damage to our kids has to stop. We all need to be reasonable and do our part for the whole community, which includes our most important citizens, the kids. If we make choices about which kids go back earlier or later, we're picking future winners and losers in our society. So bring them all back right away, be safe, and monitor aggressively, and keep moving. And one other thing, Brookline parents love our schools and teachers. But unfortunately, a wedge is being driven between the parents and teachers, and that has to stop too. Thank you for having this meeting, appreciate it.
Thank you Garth. Esther, you're up, and then Kayla Nicholson.
Hello?
Go right ahead. Yep, go right ahead.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you school committee, and thank you Dr. Marini, and thank you to Panel Four for being here today. So, the parent of a second grader at Pierce, and this is not the first time that I talk. So four weeks ago, we had no date for going back to school in-person full-time. Two weeks ago, first graders had a date, which was March 1st. Now, we have a date for grade two to five, which is March 29th. So, good job and thank you for listening. Not as early as we hoped for, but we're making progress. So now, it's time to stick with this roadmap, keep momentum, and bring also higher grades back to school in-person full-time. The science is on our side. We can reduce distancing below six feet. Brookline Public School has multiple layers of mitigation in place. So, let's not let fear prevail. It is safe to bring back kids full-time to school at less than six foot of distance. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Esther. Kayla, you're next, and then Maggie Kenneth.
Hello, hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can. Hi. Good evening. Tonight, I will be reading the words of my colleague, Dave Silberg. Hi all, COVID numbers are decreasing, which of course is a good thing. This can lead us to two possible modes of analysis. One says that what we are currently doing is working. That is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The other approach is to see these decreasing COVID numbers as cause for bringing more people back into the building. At some point, this will surely happen. But is that point when the state is still seeing daily case rates of 1,500 to 3,000 a day? And death rates of 50 to 80 a day? With the vaccination process occurring, why shouldn't we wait until more people are actually vaccinated? Furthermore, isn't it likely, or at least quite possible, that the increased bodies in the building and decrease in distancing will lead to the very increase in COVID cases that we've been doing our best to avoid? A recent study shows that while the average American lifespan has dropped by about one year, Black Americans' life expectancy has dropped nearly three years, and Latinx's life expectancy by nearly two. Hence, any decision to increase bodies in buildings would likely have a disproportionately negative impact on Black and Latinx people. Just my two cents, which on a Paris pay is all I can afford. Dave? Thank you very much.
Thank you Kayla. Maggie, you're up, and then Joe Katz.
Hi, my name is Maggie and I am the parent of a first grader at Heath. I also teach kindergarten at Lincoln. In recent weeks, there's been growing concern about students' mental and emotional well-being. And as a parent and teacher, I share that concern. It would caution us however, to realize that getting students back in school five days a week is only part of the solution. And that another huge factor is the quality of their time while in the school buildings. Over and over, I've heard people say that with all the other mitigating factors we have in place, the six-feet rule can be adjusted. This leads me to believe that when teachers do have classes of 20 students spaced three feet apart, students and teachers will be expected to adhere even more strictly than we are now to the other mitigating factors which will necessarily affect how we teach and interact. Everything will need to be extremely regimented and we will be constantly monitoring students for compliance with protocols. And then, of course, as teachers, we will be expected to simultaneously teach creatively and innovate and differentiate our instruction. Well, there comes a point at which no teacher, no human can possibly do it, when we reach a breaking point. We can make room for more desks, but there will not be room left for creativity in our teaching, differentiation, and hands-on learning. There will literally be no wiggle room. And as we all know, kids need wiggle room. Remember when the pictures first started to come out of students isolated in chalk-drawn boxes and sitting inside plastic bubbles and we were all horrified? It feels like we're starting to accept those pictures as normal and putting the importance of students being in school above what the quality of their experience will be while there. I anticipate that with this move, there is a real possibility that students who for now are having a generally happy school experience will begin to be stressed and unhappy in school. If we are truly planning for success, we need to plan not just to get the bodies in the building, but to make sure everyone feels safe and comfortable and can learn in at least a somewhat developmentally good way. Otherwise, I truly fear this move will do more harm than good for students and teachers mentally. will do more harm than good for students and teachers' mental health. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Maggie. Joe, you're up, and Natalia Linos.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joe Katz. I'm the father of a first grader and fourth grader at FRR. Of course, I have the luxury of saying that there is at least one definite kid going back and one planned. But I've spoken a couple of times and I'll echo some of my past thoughts, the damage that I've seen done, especially to my first grader being home for as long as they have been home, has been detrimental. I don't know if it's irreversible, but it's been very impactful to our family as a whole. Things like "I'm dumb, I'm stupid, I can't get my work done." So the fact that he's going back to school is wonderful, and I could be more thankful. Same feelings for my fourth grader with the plan in place. Hopefully, we follow through with that. But we are invested in this community. We're invested in making sure that all of the kids in Brookline get back into school full time. And it has to happen. I have faith in the teachers. I have faith in the students. We have high compliance rates that have been reported so far with what the kids have had to do during hybrid. And I feel that there's no reason for us to believe that that's going to change. The science shows that it's going to be safe for the kids to go back. The science shows that it's not safe for them to stay home. Their mental health is deteriorating, and like I said, I've seen that firsthand, time and time again on our Cohort A at-home days. So again, I plead with the school committee, stand up for the students that you're supposed to be representing, representing, fight for them, and please follow through with these plans and follow through with any future plans that you make for the older kids as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Natalia, you're up, and then Amanda Zimmerman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Natalia. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Natalia Linos, and I am a mother of a second grader at Pierce. I also have three-year-old twins who are in person five days a week at a daycare. I wanted to echo what a lot of parents are saying, that, you know, I feel ready to have my daughter back in school five days a week. I feel that it is safe. I am grateful to the work of Panel Four, to the work of the school committee and the numerous hours. I'm also a social epidemiologist. I have been looking at the public health data, and I feel confident that Brookline is able to do the mitigation measures, you know, the ventilation, the masking, in ways that other communities haven't been. I want to say something, though, about unions. I am grateful for the work of unions. Overall, as a public health professional, I know that workplaces have been a place of risk. That includes meatpacking plants. I worry about restaurants. So I am grateful to the unions, and I wanted to be explicit there, and to say that my top priority right now is making sure that teachers feel safe and excited, because the most important person in my daughter's life after me and her dad is her teacher. This is why when we started wearing highfiltration masks, I dropped off some to her teacher. I want the school to put in place the measures that we parents are following. So high filtration masks, making sure that, you know, everybody feels safe. I agree with the data that schools are not a place of transmission, but I go into a grocery store and I wear a highfiltration mask, even though I know chances are I won't get sick there, and I want them to have those options. I also want testing to increase so that we can continue feeling confident. And I'm so glad that the testing has shown us that Brookline Public Schools have been extremely safe. I also want to think outside the box. We have so many parents who are vaccinated because they are healthcare workers. Maybe some of them could volunteer during lunches or breakfast to be in the space so that teachers, until they are vaccinated, can, you know, step outside. There are ways for us to think creatively, and I know I'm not speaking to the school committee now, but to the teachers listening, many of us parents have you top of mind, and we make a commitment tonight that as we push for you to get our kids back into school, we too commit to not eating in restaurants, lowering our risks, because we want the schools to stay safe. We want the community's, you know, spread to remain low. And so this is my commitment as a parent, as a public health person, that I will continue pushing for every, every safety measure to be there. But I join the parents who are worried about mental health, who are worried about us staying out, and recognize that the risk of staying out of school now outweighs the risk of being in school. So thank you for everything you are doing, and I hope, I really hope that you move forward quickly and get all the kids back in. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalia. Amanda, you're up next, and then Anne Frichette.
Can you hear me okay?
I can, Amanda. Go right ahead.
Fantastic. Thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. First, I just want to say how excited my first grader is to get back to go to school full time next week. This period of remote and hybrid learning has been particularly challenging for preliterate students and their families. And I'm so happy to not have to evade the question anymore of why my daughter's three-year-old brother can go to school full time and she can't. I also want to thank you for having a hearing earlier this month largely devoted to the mental health aspects of this pandemic on children. It was truly heartbreaking to hear from parents and professionals about the very real challenges our children are facing. And I'm glad we are finally looking at ways to address them. I just want to note that it really shouldn't have taken us this long to finally ask the question, what is the impact of PSB's decisions on school model on the health and well-being of our children? I also want to note that we likely undercount mental health consequences, as our guidance counselors and social workers can only comment on the students they are aware of. And there is a whole lot that happens behind a screen at home that only the students and sometimes the parents know about. I know this hearing tonight is mainly about the PSB decision to return students to the classroom full time, and I couldn't support it more. I think it's been clear for some time now that there is a way to do so while keeping our teachers and students safe, and to continue to follow six-foot distancing when it no longer appears to be critical to keeping our students and staff safe and leads to very real negative consequences for our children is foolish. That said, I think we need, as many have said, to look to see what can be done for grades six to nine to improve their experience as well. And as an aside, if we could think of putting out a community guide to more efficient high filtration masks, I think that would be really helpful for both educators and families alike. And I just want to end with a thought that I, for one, am actually optimistic about this period of discussion with the BU. As an outsider, it seems that teachers, administrators, and parents have largely been operating in silos and have not been working on the same team for the last almost year to address the logistical challenges of educating our children during a pandemic. I'm really glad that we're finally starting, and I hope that working together, we can address some of these challenges to actually serve our students well. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Anne, you're up, and Nathan Spritz will be next.
Hi, can you hear me now?
I can, Anne. Go right ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. My name is Anne Frichette. I'm the parent of an eighth grader in the public schools, and I am myself an educator at a school that has been open for full in-person learning all year. My comments concern not just the importance of opening up the schools for full in-person learning. Of course, that needs to happen now. But I'm also concerned about the more systemic problem in the school district that has led to where we are now, where we as parents have practically to beg the school committee to reopen the schools. COVID has been a challenge in and of itself, but it has also been instructive in highlighting underlying longer-term issues that the district has been facing. As you know, the district has been facing a revolving door of leadership, both at the superintendent level and at many of the schools. With constantly changing leadership, the Teachers and Educators Union has gained considerable leverage around decisions that affect the schools with no counterbalancing voice to advocate for students. The result is a plummeting of the quality of instruction in the schools. It's been going on for a long time, even before COVID. Teachers were showing videos and TV shows in class in place of substantial instruction. With COVID and the unfortunate reliance on online instruction that has brought, teachers have become emboldened to ramp up the use of TV shows, YouTube videos of questionable quality, and video games of little substance in place of preparing lessons. And as a result, teachers have not been addressing the specific learning needs of their students, and there has been no administrative accountability. I urge the school committee and the incoming superintendent to tackle this larger systemic problem and consider the possibility of hiring non-unionized teachers for September. There has to be a shift in the balance of power to enable district administrators to hold teachers accountable. As residents and as taxpayers, we need to insist on accountability. Let's take hold of this historic moment. Change is happening anyway. Let's use this change to dismantle the educators' union and return the focus of the schools, the students, and their learning. If we do not, we will be here having the same discussion in September and then December, and then next February, trying to get the public school teachers to do their jobs. We need to start now by insisting that teachers show up to work a full week of actual, full in-person school days. It's been so long since the public schools have done that, I cannot even remember what that looks like. But that's where we need to go. Quality teachers, quality instruction, and full accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Nathan, you're up, and then Amy Lindenborn.
There we go. All right, I think I figured out how to unmute.
Go right ahead, Nathan.
Okay, I will be brief. We have many competing concerns. We have teachers who are frightened, understandably, to come back to work. We have developing science considerably more mature and confident now than a year ago that says good mitigation makes for safe classrooms. We have parents who see their children suffering learning deficits and losses, as well as social isolation and sadness, if not outright depression. And we have children who are much less engaged with their peers and much less noticeably excited about learning. So, I, as a parent, two ninth graders would like us to move forward rapidly and carefully. Let's reduce distancing as little as is necessary to get all the kids who want to be back in school actually there every day. If we can finish this year strong, we may have far fewer learning gaps and social emotional stresses going into next year. It will be easier to teach next year. I also want to make one other point. During this entire debate, I've really grown tired of parent language being corrected and thrown back in our faces at times when we say that we want school to be in person. Yes, teachers, I understand teachers are back in school four days a week, but the kids aren't. In plain English, school is not the school that we're accustomed to, and it's not the experience we're paying for. If hybrid or remote learning were as good as in-school learning, we would do it this way every year, but it's not, and we don't want to do it this way. So when parents are corrected in this way, it feels hurtful and it's dismissive. This should be a conversation, and it shouldn't be a political debate. It's not about scoring points. This is about safety and education policy. School is not back. And perhaps there's a good reason out there for it to stay this way. And I'll listen to that. I'll listen to everything that everybody has to say. But I will turn off and I will tune out when I'm told that school is back because teachers are. In plain English, please bring school back for everyone who wants to be in the building for the remainder of the year. I think everyone will be happier and be more fulfilled. And thank you, everybody who's working so hard.
Thank you, Nathan. Amy, you're up, and then Emily Engeland.
Hello?
Hi, Amy. Go ahead.
My name is Amy Lindenborn. I'm TAMI D member, Precinct Five, and a parent of two young children attending Lincoln School. I would like to second Nathan's comment about whether or not school is back. I think we really need to focus on the people that go to school mostly, which are the children. While I was going to bring up in this comment about how much easier it would be for PSB to make up the failure to provide most students with the required minimum structured learning time hours if students were full-time in person, but the state education commissioner, in a letter he sent today to local school superintendents, made that point for me. Commissioner Riley stated to be asking for the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education for the authority to determine when hybrid and remote models are no longer, will no longer count for learning hours. And that's part of Desi's larger plan to return students to full-time in-person learning as soon as possible this April, lest anyone think that March 29th is just for just kindergarten through fifth grade is only, is some kind of radical proposal of Brookline. Commissioner Riley also specifically stated that Desi intends to maintain its current policy of allowing student seating of less than six feet apart, so long as other recommended mitigation measures are in place and a minimum of three feet of seating distance is maintained. At the risk of sounding like a walking Desi press release, I wanted to share a couple of other recent documents released by Desi that most people may not be aware of. First, on February 11th, Desi released revised transportation guidance. While only a small percentage of PSB students use bus transportation, I think it's important to note that Desi has decided to eliminate distancing and capacity requirements on buses for all elementary students and for all others, middle school and high school students, except in communities with high COVID prevalence. Again, so long as masking and ventilation protocols are followed. Earlier, and finally, earlier this week, the emergency teaching license provisions that were set to expire this June are now extended until next June 2022. This means that through next year, districts can, among other things, one, hire anyone with a bachelor's degree and sound moral character, those are their words, to be a classroom teacher. Two, and also it would include out-of-state applicants moving to Massachusetts, and the hours that they work can count towards professional teacher status. Also, school psychologists can be hired immediately after completion of their masters. I know staffing is a serious concern, and it continues to be a concern. I urge the district to support the needs of our teachers and students, and to reach out to these new graduates who may be eager for the opportunity to work in our schools. But we can't wait. I urge you to offer all kids a place back in the classroom full time on March 29th. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Emily, you're up, and then Jeff Rudolph.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Emily. Go right ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, to encourage you to reduce distancing in schools as outlined in the MOA. BSB is synonymous with overcrowding, and we cannot get all kids back to school full time without reducing distance. You say you're planning a full return in fall, but by not changing distancing to a minimum of three feet, you are essentially telling the public that you cannot return all kids to school. We have done an excellent job with mitigation, air purification, upgraded ventilation systems, contact tracing, pool testing, PPU, world-renowned advice. Vaccines are forging ahead, infection rates are down, hospitalizations are down. And I realize that there are teachers and some families who are frightened. And luckily, we still have RLA as an option, but the rest of us have not been given an option. As a healthcare professional and a former sixth-grade public school teacher, I understand where the fear is coming from. I understand that there are employees and students who have gotten sick, but this is true in every profession and in every setting. Yes, there is risk, but it's time to accept it and move on. Teachers and administrators work hard to create an online classroom that was a stopgap to an emergency situation. It was a monumental effort, and it's something to be proud of. But one year later, we are no longer in a state of emergency. Science has changed. CDC recommendations have adapted, businesses have adapted, and essential workers are doing what needs to be done to keep society moving. And it's time for our schools to commit to fully doing the same. We are now replacing the public health crisis of COVID with a public health crisis of inequality and mental health crisis. While teaching is not a profession but a calling, I know that. Teachers do have a choice of where to work. Our children do not. Teachers are exhausted. Kids and teachers have hit the wall. We need our classroom put back together. It's not fair to anyone. And lastly, I just want to say that kids are not staying six feet apart now. Kids are interacting outside of school, playing on sports teams, dancing in dance studios. High school students are working. They're volunteering at the food pantry. Younger kids are in a smattering of childcare in order for their parents to work. It's naive to think that these things are not happening, and it's irresponsible to use it as the excuse for not returning to school full time. And to all the teachers listening tonight, who know me especially, thank you for your hard work and for coming back to the classroom. You are essential to our kids' lives. You are essential to the functioning of our society. You can do it. We want to help. And Dr. Marini, please make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Jeff, you're up, and then Sam Dickerman and Joanne McPherson are coming on as a team.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Sure, Jeff.
Hi, hi, everybody. I'm Jeff Rudolph, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, and also a parent of a fourth and seventh grader at Pierce. A few of us started a petition last Friday, February 19th. I'd like to read to you. It was signed by 215 people that we know are directly affiliated with Brookline and our schools, and another 105 friends and family from elsewhere. Hopefully, I'm going to squeeze this in, David, to the two minutes. I'm going to give it a shot here. Brookline Superintendent Marini and School Committee, we, the undersigned PSB stakeholders, call on you to return all PSB hybrid students to full-time, five-days-a-week in-person learning as quickly as possible, and at the very least by March 15, 2021. As you wrote in your February 18th proposal, the social emotional well-being of students is of critical concern. Hybrid instruction has a profound impact on students, and PSB's mitigation measures effectively contain COVID. As you said, on February 18th, six-foot distancing is not required in order for teachers and students to be safe, and schools are safe with three-foot distancing, according to the consensus scientific evidence you have been given. You've heard hours of testimony from parents like me, students, your own counseling staff, worrying you that keeping children out of school is doing obvious harm. The children are suffering and in many cases in danger. The children are suffering and in many cases in danger. By leaving 11- to 16-year-olds, including my seventh grader, out of your reopening plans, you fail to heed all of the above advice to the detriment of thousands of vulnerable adolescents in our community. This is unacceptable. We call on you to submit a revised proposal to BEU without further delay. Revised proposal must clearly adopt three feet as a minimum distance standard in all PSP buildings, return all now hybrid students to full-time in-person learning before March 15th, and restore all student learning time that was cut under the hybrid model, including adding back 100 minutes every Wednesday and eliminating the remaining Monday, Friday early release days. We call on you to sustain a commitment to these three principles such that they are contained in your last best-on-the-record offer for the MOA without compromise. Please do not negotiate our children's well-being. We call on you to begin negotiations with the BEU immediately, and to complete negotiations in three weeks or less, as agreed in the MOA, so these plans can be implemented without delay. We call on you to make the urgent needs of students your primary driver, your north star in all decisions going forward. And finally, we call on you to find ways to say yes to creatively and cooperatively solve operational challenges. Logistics can be managed, scheduling can be managed, furniture can be managed. More time without in-person school cannot be managed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Sam and Joanne, you're up next, and then Jessica Winna Schubel and Bob Miller will be after that. And then they're our last speakers.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
I can, Sam.
All right, thanks very much. So my name's Sam Dickerman. I am a product of Brookline Schools. I've been teaching at Brookline High School for 17 years. I live in Brookline. I have two children in the Brookline Schools, one a seventh grader at Pierce and a tenth grader at the high school, and I teach four days a week at Old Lincoln. I just want to quickly, before I start reading this letter from the union, I just want to say personally, this is me speaking for myself, I want to say thank you for those of you that spoke in support of teachers. I really appreciate it, and I'm a little bit shocked to hear some of the vitriol against teachers. It's sad, but I just want you to know, I'm going to pledge that regardless of what people are saying, I'm going to continue working as hard as I can. I love my students, and I'm there to defend them just as much as the school committee or anyone else. So that's my two cents on that. Here's what the union asked me to read. Dear parents and community members, the Brookline Educated Union has always been in favor of returning to in-person education as soon as it was feasible to do so. We were happy to cooperate with the Brookline Public Schools of Brookline to transition from fully remote to hybrid this fall and are proud that we have kept our students safe. As we look forward to quickly returning all of our students to our classrooms full-time and to the public hearing on February 23rd, we continue to advocate for our families, students, and staff, asking that the district proceed with this plan in a way that is safe, clearly articulated, and appropriately supported by resources. We listened carefully to Dr. Marini present his ideas for returning more students. While we are still assessing the PSP document data on the safety of reduced distancing, we believe there are logistical questions that need answers in order to successfully move forward. Here are a few of these initial questions include: How many families want to return to school full-time at reduced distances? Will families be comfortable with five feet, four feet, three feet? How will families know the distance at which students in their specific classrooms will be distanced? We encourage the district to calculate and publish the spacing that will be required in each classroom to accommodate a full class of students and to survey parents to find out their comfort with these published distances. How many families would want to switch to remote learning if distancing were reduced? Will these families have an opportunity to move their children from in-person classrooms to the RLA? Families were told to make a final decision about their instructional model before they knew that we would return to school full-time at reduced distancing. When distancing is reduced, more students and staff may need to be quarantined because they are much more likely to be close contacts. Will more substitute teachers be hired and trained to cover teachers and staff who may be required to quarantine? And the last bullet point I have is, are paraprofessional jobs fully staffed at this point? If not, when will they be? A fully populated school depends on the expertise and attention of paraprofessionals. I'll now pass the microphone to my colleague Joanna McPherson.
Hello, all. Joanna McPherson, sixth-grade teacher at Pierce and also medical parent to a second grader at Triscoll. There were some additional questions that we had specifically for pre-K to eight educators. These questions are: Children are eating lunch, snack, and sometimes breakfast daily in the classrooms. They're all unmasked times. How will these times be handled, given reduced distances, to protect students and staff? How is the district planning to monitor increasing risks? Will there be testing protocols and daily attestations for students and staff? What metrics will be used to monitor and decide the reduced distancing conditions are safe indeed? What would trigger the shutdown of a class in school in terms of positive cases? Have the UK variant and other variants been planned for? Last fall, Panel Four suggested that five air changes per hour was the goal for bringing a full class in, but four air changes per hour was provisionally okay while we were in hybrid. What are the plans for bringing ventilation up to five air changes per hour? What support will the district offer to students who are quarantined and/or awaiting negative test results? How will fourth and fifth grade music conservatory classes be delivered safely in person, given both the nature of the classes and the need to mix cohorts of students for this particular class? Additionally, specialists often move between classrooms and can be exposed to hundreds of students daily. How will the district address their increased risk of exposure? Please do hear me when I say that the BEU looks forward to working with the district to bring students back into our classrooms full-time. We want nothing more. This transition can only be successful if the district works with the educators to identify and address the challenges that will undoubtedly arise. Furthermore, it is our hope that there will be more support for our school administrators as they work to rebuild school schedules and redefine space uses. While everyone is anxious, frustrated, and COVID-fatigued indeed, we believe that with thoughtful planning and troubleshooting during this particular phase, we can safely bring back more students fully in-person. Sincerely, the educators of the BEU. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Jess and Bob, you're up next, and you're our last speakers.
Thank you, Suzanne. The BEU's 1,100 members and their school-based administration colleagues have been working intensively with students day in and day out since our schools opened in September. While families have made their decisions about which teaching modality they want, educators have been matching students with available resources, showing them that they are loved and cared for, keeping them healthy and safe, and helping them to see that they can learn even under shifting conditions. It is sad and painful to see a subset of the community seeking on social media to pit adults against children and claiming that educators are not being problem solvers. The reality is that there is heartfelt and skilled problem-solving collaboration underway between educators and parents at the school level and between the BEU and the central administration. Everyone agrees that more transparency is a good thing, it seems, where problem solving is concerned. So it's good to have educators let the community know that there are pressing problems that need to be solved if students are to have a school experience that is trauma-sensitive, meaning that it's one that is attentive to the importance of them experiencing safety, predictability, and control. The BEU is a strong advocate of open bargaining where community members can witness a venue that enables parties to look thoughtfully at the complexity of the challenges involved in creating safety, predictability, and control for children, and then to arrive at solutions to the challenges. Our members know, for instance, that teaching is by its very nature interactive. Thus, for example, if you plan for safety, if your plan for safety is premised on resourcing a school with one teacher per classroom and expecting the teacher to keep students three feet apart while staying six feet away from them or close to that, then three feet of physical distancing will easily shrink to no feet. A proven layer of protection and predictable expectations for students will be removed. If you are ready to eliminate social distancing itself, it is only fair that you be transparent and tell the community that that is what people should expect. Perhaps you have in mind to have a paraprofessional help the teacher keep the students safe and well-supported. If you pay something so low and your safety plan is too weak to attract and retain needed pairs and substitute teachers, the community has a right to know that the degree to which staffing challenges are affecting educators is affecting their ability to supervise behavior and learning and thus safety. Let me turn it over to Bob, so we're in our two minutes.
As the understanding of the science of COVID evolves, along with the evolution of the virus itself, there's more to learn about the pandemic's impact on different age groups. This includes the effects of pressures and unpredictability produced by in-school conditions themselves. With all this in mind, the BEU will be insisting on detailed implementation plans and enhanced mitigation measures, as well as detailed information on the spread of COVID in our schools, attendance rates, and understaffing levels, to help assure the school community that the plans are working for students and staff and that everyone is safe. Yes, we have more questions and solutions tonight. Unfortunately, there are some who think that questions about staffing, resources, and plans are questions that educators should stop asking, as if they can magically deliver trauma-sensitive education without resources and well-coordinated approaches. The more opaque the situation, the more questions and fewer solutions. Obviously, we're all grasping at the hope that infection rates will continue to fall thanks to successful vaccination and mitigation practices. Yet you are hearing many questions tonight, and we'll hear still more moving forward. We ask that you answer these questions so that we can then find the solutions to best educate our students in a safe environment. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Bob. That concludes our public hearing for tonight. Do know that Robin takes all this down for us, and they are in our minutes, and that we will be deliberating on our suggestions of what we heard tonight, and we will be going forward with negotiations with the BEU in the next several weeks. So thank you, everyone, for your comments, your concerns, your gratefulness, and we will continue now with the rest of the meeting. So we are moving on to an update on the FY21 budget. And I think that's Mary Ellen, and Mariah and Jim.
Yeah, I think we should go to Mary Ellen. She's going to share a screen and take us through. The FY21 budget, Mary Ellen, update.
Yeah. I had it open, and apologies.
I just went a little way there. Just want to say thank you to our guests who have been panelists tonight. You're certainly welcome to stay as long as you want, but you're also welcome to leave. Enjoy your evening, so it's up to you.
All right. I'm going to share my screen. The second quarter report, we shifted from roughly $715,000 was the last financial report that we had done early in January to roughly about a projection of around $803,000 in deficit. We have, we're still carrying funds for the RLA at this point. We are waiting for the town to get back to us in terms of how we would make those transfers of our RLA expenses to the town cares funds. And also, in the last few, last month, January, the school committee voted to support the adult and community deficit, projected deficit of $200,000. The difference is also, we have continued to add staff to the Remote Learning Academy and to address teaching and learning needs for students there, and that was generally the increase between the last financial report and this one. We currently are holding roughly $1.3 million in our expense lines from our budget freeze to offset our salary expenses. We are also holding as well, anticipating expenses for special education services as we move into June, and roughly, we are also experiencing, there is no cost savings when we have a teacher that is on a leave of absence or extended sick leave and substitute costs. So we're trying to project what that impact is going to be between now and the spring. Typically, in the spring, people who are on a leave of absence will have run out of their sick time or their allocation of pay, and we would start seeing a savings with the long-term sub replacing that permanent employee. So we do have some exposure that currently isn't, is currently being analyzed in terms of our costs to provide substitutes for teachers who are, teachers or employees who are on leave and using their allowable and eligible sick time. So with that, I guess that's sort of a quick summary. Is there any questions that people have? I'll stop sharing. The memos in your, should be in your packet. Also had provided to you as a memo that Mike Donofrio had completed, as well as a memo that Matt Gillis did. Mike Donofrio did a report for us around special education and services and costs they're experiencing, as well as Matt Gillis provided a summary report around the savings that we've had for transportation and school buses and special ed transportation this year, all of which are included in the financial report in terms of dollar impact.
I have a question. Mary Ellen, could you just think out loud how we're going to make up this deficit? I mean, what's your thinking about this?
The only thought I've had, which is one I've said from, really kind of proposed from the beginning, is around a reserve fund transfer. They're really, and just continue, we need to frankly, we need to stop adding employees or staff. I do have a concern that as we bring students back, there will be requests for additional staffing. We need to be able to do that within our current staffing structure and employees who we are paying and have been paying. So I do, we do need to check in with the advisory committee on what the status is of the reserve fund. My last inquiry a few weeks ago was that there was roughly about $800,000 in that reserve fund. I don't know if I will, I need to check again, and we'll check again on this month and where that reserve fund sits. There are any number of different things that happened between now and June. We have, we're regularly and daily reviewing any open purchase orders and closing open purchase orders out, closing out open requisitions of funds that departments were holding for the spring and purchase of supplies and materials in the spring. Holding the funds that we're holding in reserve that's listed on the second page as those become identified, that we don't need to reserve those funds, those become available, and that will begin to reduce the deficit monthly generally. So I would expect, similar to what we had happen last year where our deficit was larger, we were able to, by monitoring all of that in the last few months of the fiscal year, we were able to bring it down pretty close. The issue we have is that there are no, there are no funds in other funds available for us to use. We've used all those that were eligible. We are maxing out circuit breaker for special education tuitions and transportation, and it's, right now, it's just, we just got to manage it all the way through and be careful about what we add to our expenditures.
Thank you. Other people have questions, comments? Okay, Helen, and then Mariah.
So maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, and correct me if I'm wrong. Mary Ellen, but if we don't add staff... Mary Ellen, but if we don't add staff and continue the way we're doing, we could end up without a deficit?
We could slide into a zero, yeah. Through just, because 800,000 out of 120 million, you know, is a very small percentage, right? It's a fraction. So, you know, the, my long-term experience is that pennies add up and pennies in a large budget add up pretty quickly into thousands of dollars. And so every little bit helps and counts. And so that, that, but I do believe we do need to keep a hand on or a commitment to or have a commitment of the reserve fund, because I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how close we'll get, get there and how quickly we'll, it'll be the, it'll be the 11th hour again like it was last year. Unfortunately.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
To be honest, yeah.
Mariah, did you?
My question actually is, thanks Suzanne, is exactly about the reserve fund. I thought we had a million-dollar marker in the reserve fund placed already. And so I, okay, is the 800,000 you're talking about in addition to that?
No, no, the million-dollar marker was our request, but they've spent the reserve fund down to 800,000 as being available.
So they did not hold that money?
I, I think that's how I understand it. I could be mistaken.
Can we get confirmation on that?
Absolutely.
That seems surprising. Just seems a little surprising that they would, that knowing we've sort of had that million-dollar marker out there, they would have spent it down without at least consulting, checking in. Thank you for checking.
I will follow up, yeah.
Oh, Jennifer?
I actually have something that's probably more akin to a statement than a question. So, and I, I think actually this isn't just a school committee or to the district. I think that my statement is really for the whole community. You know, we, we heard a lot of very powerful feedback today and over, over the many, many months and in years on, on school committee. And, and I think that I'm just wondering when we, and when I say we, I just, I mean, like a global community are going to recognize that schools serve not only an academic purpose and need, but also one of food security, one of social emotional wellness and mental health. In many cases, you know, schools are helping to provide clothing and winter gear for students and families, and they, we provide a lot of service, important services for students. And when I think about the budget, schools originally, in public education, were not necessarily designed for all of these purposes. It was in the beginning, a very educational sort of academic purpose. And that I think that we need to acknowledge what we ask of our schools and that I, I just want to encourage, I'm sorry, let me back up. I think that we, we can see and we can hear how important schools are. And the pandemic has made this even more obvious, I think, to lots of members of the community. And I mean, I, I want to urge we as a community, as a, as a town of Brookline, as the school committee, as the school district to, and I know that we've done some of this at the school committee, but to advocate for more funding and supports. And I ask all of our very passionate community members to continue their advocacy and their strong voices at the state and federal and local level, because we are providing more than just an academic education for students. And we want to provide, I want us to provide social emotional sports. I know, I, I know, I've heard you all talk about that. And we just simply need more money to do what we set out to do. And I'm not just talking about a fund, reserve fund transfer from, from the, from our local government. I, I just mean that federally and nationally, nationally and statewide, we need people to be this passionate, even after the pandemic is over, to advocate for, for public schools and education. So I, I really, it's more of a statement than, than a question, but I just feel like this is the time to make that statement. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. Does anyone else would like to speak on this topic? Barbara?
I, I simply want to support what Jennifer says. I think that one thing we need to do is let people know exactly what we do as a school committee. At a meeting I was at recently, someone was comparing the number of senior citizens to the number of students in the school. And while it is true that we need considerably more money for our senior citizens, this person thought that it would be useful to remove some money from the school budget to move over to senior citizens. And I think people look at the amount of money we get, and they have no real conception of the, of exactly what we do and of the intricacy of the program, of, of all of the programs. It is, it is, it is not a tiny little department with three or four people at the top and the teachers and the students. And I don't know if that is recognized in the community, how complex the, the school department is and exactly what it does. So I really want to support what Jennifer says and, and say that maybe what we need to do is let people in some way realize exactly where our money goes and how, and how if we were to cut that significantly or not have enough, what kinds of things would we be cutting out? I just, I, I, I just think that people, people think, you know, these people say, get rid of the fifth floor. We don't need all those people. Well, the truth of the matter is we do need all of those people. And I just, I think we need to be, be more careful as we move forward to let people know about the complexity of what is being done and the cost of doing it. And that's not anything we can do with, you know, the budget hearings and things like that. But I think we just, we need to, we need to let people know that, I mean, who knows? For example, that, that all of the, we, we have provided a tremendous amount of food free of costs to people who need it. People don't stop to think about, that's what the school committee is doing. So I just, I do think that we need to be clear with the community what we are doing with our money and how complex this school department really is. So I do support what Jennifer is saying.
Thank you, Barbara. Susan?
Yeah, thank you. I also want to support what Jennifer said and Barbara. I also just want to thank our, our public hearing participants, all of our frequent flyers and our new participants. It's just good to see people coming out on this because, you know, and, and I don't know if folks are aware of this, but right now there's a BHS webinar going on, being facilitated by PSP educators and students, and they're talking to parents, there are like 50 people on it, about how stressed out they are right now and how tough this is right now. And I'm glad they're doing it. I'm glad the educators and the, and the support staff and the, and the students are doing it. But I just, I can't say enough about how schools are about, when we, when we talk about schools being about whole child and community, like that's what that is. They're not about tests. They're not about a whole lot of things. They're about people, and we are growing people. And I know people are scared of the word character, but we are, we are growing character. And I mean, the good news is the year isn't over, right? We're, we're sort of all talking about is those all finished. And I just want to remind people that we are approaching a one-year anniversary, which means we still have a third of the year left, and we still have 15 weeks of school left, as my children keep telling me. So there is time, I mean, there is a, yes, the clock is running out, and there's a lot of time left on the clock, you know, to educate children and to, and to build the community in this way. And I know some people want to jump straight to the summer school conversation, but like, that's great, I'm all for that. But like, I'm focused on now, this year, and we talked about this earlier in, in curriculum, but like, there's four months left on this year for educators and parents and students to, to learn. So, so to me, this, this urgency is real. And I think just to echo, you know, something that Jennifer was alluding to, like, I just think that there, there's this idea that, that somehow, well, I don't want to put this on Jennifer. So let me say for me, I think there's a lot of concern about whether or not we're going to wait for a tragedy to happen in order to act and, you know, until there are suicides to act. And, you know, we already have self-harm. We already have a surge in patient referrals. We already have red lights flashing at the railroad crossing, the gates are coming down. We don't have to stand on the tracks to see if a train is actually going to come in order to act. And, and I feel like we have such an obligation, you know, as school committee members, we have a big task. And, you know, I, my daughter tells me I don't need to be spending 20 and 30 hours a week on school committee, on the task force and panel four, but I feel like that matters. I feel like it really matters, and I feel like I'm biased, but we've done pretty much everything we can possibly do to make the buildings as safe as we can. And I just think that thinking about how hard this budget is going to be for next year and thinking about how much time we still have left on the clock now, I just want us to sort of think of every day as being precious and, and thinking about the safety of our kids, the mental health, the physical health, the, the safety of everyone in the community, teachers as well, and, you know, so, you know, are, are keeping these schools safe, right? The reasons that we have low transmission rates is because our educators are keeping the kids safe. And I just think that we have to keep reminding ourselves of all of those facts at once and keep them all in the frame. So at any rate, I just want to echo what Jennifer was saying about this not being just sort of myopic, but really kind of pulling, pulling the camera back and, and, and seeing that big picture.
Thank you, Susan. Seeing no other hands, we're going to move on. So thank you. Thank you, Mary Ellen, for your updates. We are moving to a policy review. David, you're up.
All right, so what we have on the agenda for today is the policy on special services. And upon a presentation from both Mary Ellen and Casey that we had two policy subcommitings ago, they pointed out that basically everything that's in that policy has been rendered obsolete by changes in state and federal law. So as a result, the policy subcommittee voted for zero to recommend that the full school committee eliminate the policy, which is not something we usually do, but given that it's obsolete and that upon checking literally over a dozen other districts for whether they have a policy on special services, they, they do not. So other districts have gotten rid of this. We already have the few elements that would be relevant from it are elsewhere and already protected under the law. So that's our recommendation. Mary Ellen or Casey, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you captured it. Thank you.
So technically, this is on for first reading, even though we're not reading anything, but we can discuss it, or if anyone has questions that they want us to, that you would like for us to mull over before we have the second reading at a subsequent school committee meeting.
I will just point out that some, some parts of this policy date back to 1975. So it's, it is a little old in terms of just age. Any comments or questions?
So I'm just wondering, because I'm sure there are other policies too that are irrelevant at this point or, you know, have been superseded or whatever. The reason to wait a second, you know, to, to bring it back again and talk about it again? I'm not sure why.
I think just as a general process matter, it's good to give both school committee members as well as members of the general public an opportunity to provide input for our consideration rather than going immediately. But we did consider this twice at the policy subcommittee, and we can bring this back again very quickly at a subsequent school committee meeting. And if they have really strong feelings about it, they can let us know in the interim. And then just in terms of more broadly about looking at older policies in the handbook, that's something that we've also been doing. Now, some of these policies, I, I think it's the will of the policy subcommittee to keep because we like them. But there are other ones where the material is obsolete or it's been superseded by changes in law. And in those situations where it's something that is no longer even applicable, it may make sense to remove it from our handbook rather than just keep it there as a vestige of another era. So I've been sort of taking it, making it a part of the committee's work to go through policies that we should eliminate, policies we should revise. And then also there are instances where we have to draft policies from scratch where there isn't one at all. And something I've been doing is looking at what our peer districts have in their policy handbooks. And I also look at the MAS C-based policies. I compare them to what we have. And it's very interesting to see the differences. I, I honestly think that in some instances, some of our policies from the 70s are better than what the MAS C has today. In other instances, it's the other way around, but it varies.
Thank you, David, for doing this work. Thank you to the policy committee. Okay, we're going to move on, and we're going to go to EDCO. So Helen?
So we discussed EDCO at our last meeting and said we were going to bring a vote for termination to this meeting. Before I put the motion forward, I want people to be aware that in the packet that you got, there's some, when they were doing the estimates of closing EDCO, they were being very conservative. And some of those costs have gone down, not enough, but have at least gone the right way. And there's a meeting on Thursday where I'll be getting more information that I can bring back to the committee. In the meantime, in order for EDCO to terminate, majority of the school committees need to vote it. And so that is why we have it docketed for today. And we have to have, actually, once we vote it, and if we vote in the affirmative to terminate, Miss Coyne needs to send a copy of the minutes to EDCO so that it will be noted there and all be official. So.
Helen, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll with great regret make a motion to, to have the Brookline School Committee vote to terminate the, just to make sure I'm getting this right, Robin, help me if I'm doing it wrong, to terminate the EDCO collaborative as of June 30, 2022.
So it's around for another year?
Well, I can explain that if you'd like. It can stop, cease to work, to have students, to have staff, but there's, the state requires collaboratives. There's all sorts of, with the new legislation that happened with collaboratives, there's all sorts of regulations in terms of terminating. And so the earliest possible that they could finish with everything would be June 30, 2022. That's not to say that they can't finish operations as of this June.
Okay, do we have a second to the motion? Thank you, David. Does anyone have a question for Helen or, sure, Dimitri?
Thank you, Suzanne. Helen, can you remind me, what was the EDCO effect on the annual budget in Brookline? How much money were we giving? And I'm just trying to understand, are we, can we, can we see that as a saving in FY22? Or we need to wait for one more year?
We, we, it will be a, a cost to us. I mean, we're working on trying to lower it. It will be more than what we budgeted, if Mary Ellen budgeted for next year, which I'm not sure. What was the total cost, I think, that we paid in? Somebody knew that amount.
It's been in like the 18,000 to 30,000 range. Does that sound right?
I think a little higher. I think a little higher. And this last year, we had to pay a, a special assessment because they had a deficit. I think it was closer to 44,000, something like that is what, but it's, eventually, yes, it will be a savings.
When, when do we think, when does it become a savings, Mary Ellen? Do you have a sense?
Well, I, I don't, because I think about sort of how and what we use EDCO for, which is really around professional development. We would, there was some relationship with them with regards to special education programs, but those were not, those would have been our, those aren't savings because the students still are specialized students, so they may have been transferred to other programs. So there's really no savings in that, from that. So I, I don't know that there really is savings because we still need to do the professional. So I, I don't know that there really is savings because we still need to do the professional development.
Okay, so that money will still go there, okay?
Yeah, yeah. From a, from a type of expense, it will stay with what it was, its purpose was for.
Purpose was, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none, we'll vote. David?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Helen.
Just so people know, as I find out more and more, because Edco also has some programs besides their special ed programs that may continue with other collaboratives, I'll let you know how things are going and keep you updated through this process through June.
Thank you, Helen, for all the years you've put in with Edco and representing us. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, they, in many respects, it was, you know, in its heyday, it was amazing. People would go to job alikes, you know, there were all sorts of benefits that, that all the districts got from being able to collaborate, from being able to, you know, work together on things. So it's, it's a shame that it's come to this.
Yeah. We're going to move on to subcommittee and liaison reports.
Can I just make a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, really, it's, I'm glad you made the motion with regret, Helen, because it is, it's a sad day in many ways for the Edco communities that collaborated so strongly. And, and Helen, you have been one of the founders and actually really developed Edco into what it is a professional, was a professional organization that served the needs of kids in an extraordinary way and served the needs of teachers with professional development as well. And probably more than that, the relationships among the superintendents who attended those Edco meetings really made a professional community unlike any that we have ever seen. And the fact that Edco is time is now over for a variety of reasons is a, is a, is a serious loss to superintendents in the district. And the, the community should know, Helen, that your work to build that community up with Jim Walsh and with others was distinctive and there was no question about it. So it's not just a loss because this organization is not financially viable. It's a loss for the work that you did to build that kind of a, of an organization in a time when people had to share resources. So the, the loss is deep. And I think that those of us who've been around for a while recognize that and really honor your service. And I think it's painful for you to have made that recommendation. So know that, that's recognized. Thanks.
You're here. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you. We're going to move on to subcommittee and liaison reports. So if you have something to report, raise your hand and we will let you have the floor. Mariah?
We had a finance meeting last Thursday. And, and I believe I might have mentioned it last, because we had a meeting last Thursday too, right? Yes, I might have mentioned at that time, oh no, because we just talked about the proposal. Sorry, I was thinking a little bit in real time here. We're looking at ways to bring some greater transparency into the budget review process this year through the finance subcommittee and looking to schedule some additional meetings to talk about different components, subsections of the budget. And we're working through the best way to do that. We had a really great conversation at finance about this last week and sort of the different ways it could be done and benefits and drawbacks of different approaches. And I think we'll have more information soon, especially to the finance subcommittee, so we can do some scheduling around when those presentations will be. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else has something? Jennifer, curriculum?
We met just before this meeting from four to 5:30. And we were discussing interventions this year for students. We were talking about assessing student learning in the 2021, 2022 school year. And we also talked about time on learning and the number of hours over numbers of days and did an update. So that was recorded and will be posted. We'll also be meeting in March. It looks like we may be having two meetings in March to divide up some topics. Upcoming agenda items include work on the essential curriculum, discussions of summer school and, I'm sorry. The panel, hopefully panels one, two, and three coming at another time, but there was something else. Essential curriculum, summer school, oh, and child study team as well, looking at that process. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else? Did you want to say anything, Helen, about the superintendent search or no?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for reminding me. I feel so immersed and I think everybody knows already. Many of you have probably seen, I know all staff, all parents and guardians, and I think all school committee members have gotten the, the visiting schedule for Dr. Linus Guillory. The meetings on Wednesday will be mostly on Zoom, will be all on Zoom actually, and on Friday will be in person. And I will be taking him around to some of the schools and then meeting with senior staff, et cetera. On Monday, the sec, first, second of March, Monday's the first, thank you. We will be doing a school committee interview of Dr. Guillory. And then on, we're in the process of planning a virtual site visit with people in Lowell. And then on Thursday, the school committee will, has documented a vote to, for Dr. Linus. So that's sort of the schedule at this point.
It's posted, right, Helen?
Everything is posted.
Okay.
Everything is also on our website, in the superintendent's search part of the website. And there will be feedback forms for people once, when they go to these different Zooms or, or meet with Dr. Guillory and, and different aspects, there'll be a feedback form that will be sent out after the meetings to those participants. And they can then send it back and we will get it back from MAS C, sort of all tabulated and so that we can get a sense of where, what the community thinks. I think, is there anything else that I'm missing?
No, you just always thank the 17 members that were on your committee for the search, so.
Oh, for sure. They really did yeoman's work and were great. And, and thank you to the school committee members who were on it too. You know, I think it's, it was a great, a great group that really worked well together.
Thank you, Helen. Does anyone else have a committee report, liaison report? Okay. Oh, Susan.
No, I will just briefly say that the panels, as you mentioned in the beginning, Suzanne and Jim have been working to pull together their recommendations. And so we had a discussion earlier tonight about when, we've heard a lot from panel four, we're very grateful. Talked a little bit earlier tonight about when we could docket panels one, two, and three for their, their contributions around mental health, whole child wellness, a lot of the conversations we're having here, in addition to educator capacity building around remote learning. So hopefully those will be coming in the coming weeks and, and we'll get reports, sort of paper copies in advance from those. So look forward to those coming down the pike.
Thank you. Thank you for all their work, for sure. And thank you for organizing all that, Suzanne. It's been a lot of work, I know. Any new business? That anyone has? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move that we meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purposes. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, non-aligned personnel. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, BEU, Unit A, U to B, and paraprofessionals, and AFSMI, School Food Services, Brookline Educational Secretaries Association, Building Services employees, and to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation. I don't know, I'll throw in Edco collaborative, I don't know. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and the chair, I so declare. And purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meeting, February 11th, 2021. Do I have a second to the motion? Thank you, Andy, and we vote to go into executive session. David?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes, yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Dimitri?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And we will not be coming back to open session.
Suzanne, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to ask Robyn if she could resend me the link for executive session. Thank you.
So we will not be coming back to an open meeting after our executive session. And so I will see everybody on the other side.